Tori.
Hi, Jean.
Sam, did you get your audio working yet? Hi, Sue. Oh, dear God, she's coughing. Uh oh, she's coughing. Too low. Too low. There you go. Hi, Sue.
Hi. Yes, we are.
Hi.
We are live on YouTube, just so everybody knows. According to my computer.
Hi there.
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by town.
Oh, it's working now, Sam.
Enter your participant ID, followed by town. Otherwise, just press town to continue. You are in this meeting is being recorded.
Are those people not on?
Hey, Sam, this is Jess. Is your audio working now?
Not through my computer, but I have it through my phone.
Okay, you may need to turn the sound off your computer. I'm wondering if we're getting an echo from you.
I can definitely hear an echo. Is that better?
No.
No, 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 no.
Then I'm just gonna be quiet.
Okay, we can mute you for the time being and then you can unmute yourself if you have things to share.
Okay. Hi, Kevin.
Hello. Should we go ahead and get started? X30 on the dot. So do the call order. Roll call for board members. I see everybody. We're good there. I get an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion passes. Then Chris and company will hand it off to you guys.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thanks for joining us. You know, two weeks ago, we had a regular board meeting and that night, we kind of laid out what we thought were both probably our best case and maybe our worst case scenarios. So over the last two weeks, we've been really putting those plans into place as well as developing more plans for closure a little bit longer than we anticipated from the get-go. So kind of want to do similar to what we did two weeks ago. We're gonna have a number of department heads kind of walk through an update on what's been going on kind of in their world and the challenges that continue to face them. Well, there's those one at a time and then so Katie Gag will go first with School Food and Nutrition Service report and once she's completed her report, then we'll open it up for questions, then we'll move on to facilities and continue moving that way. So Katie, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. So when I reported to you guys a couple of weeks ago with our plan for this went into play, we suggested Melville would be a main serving site as well as having four buses go out to different locations, mainly those target areas where we saw a heat on the heat map that they were concentrated with free and reduced students. So before we deployed, we actually added two more buses. So we actually have six buses that are going out. The two additional sites are Beer Mom and Oakville High School, along with those four apartment complexes I initially talked about. Brought in a lot, a lot of food Monday. We were planning to serve. That was the biggest challenge of this, not knowing how many kids were going to eat with us. So I planned heavy, just like food service 101, that's what you're always supposed to do. Plan for 5,000 meals each day. Didn't quite hit that on the first day. We served 436 kiddos. So brought in a lot of food. We still have a lot of food, but the numbers have gone up. We're ranging, we actually served 648 today, served 245 out of Oakville High School, so they're a leading school. But I have a wonderful staff coming in in the morning prepping sandwiches. We have bag lunches that we provide them with the sandwich along with a breakfast for the next morning. Trying to keep the same staff on those buses so they kind of build up that rapport with those people coming through and it's actually, I got an email from a manager this evening that over at Oakville Senior, they had a mom bring her flowers and a thank you card from her kids saying how appreciative they were for these breakfast and lunch and they just want to make sure it makes, let us know that it makes their life a little easier. And I've only been out in the line a couple of times, but everybody coming through is just so thankful and appreciative for the service we're providing and we're trying to spread the word to everybody because I think there might be a misconception out there that the service is only for students that qualify for free reduce, which is definitely not the case. We will serve anybody 18 and younger. Includes if they have a two-year-old, a three-year-old, the only especially in the line telling people we're, I have some very enthusiastic managers and other staff members working in the line and it's been really good for them too because they actually really miss the kids as well. So it's kind of a dual role of the kids and the parents are thankful, but so are my staff. They're very good. Thankful to be out there seeing the folks as well. So it's going well and that's really all it, but hoping to see more and more kiddos coming through the line, but sent out a work schedule for next week and it's mainly just school food staff that are working it right now. But they're, they fill up, actually I haven't checked the spreadsheet, but I'm sure it's already filled up already. They're willing to get out there and they all have big hearts and want to do what they can to do what they do every day normally is feed our students. So that's about all I have unless you guys have any questions for me.
But thanks, Katie. You guys are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. It's not just me and, well, I'm sorry. Huge thank you to Dr. De Kemper in the transportation staff. Had some phenomenal drivers that have been with us every day. They're doing just driving. They're hauling milk, they're picking it up, they're doing everything their part as well as facilities. So it's definitely a team effort with the classified staff. Everybody's pitching in. So it's not just school food. So I apologize, I forgot to mention. And Dr. De Kemper has been there every day with us. You know, pulling coolers and doing everything. So I'm very appreciative for their extra help from the other departments as well.
Is there any like other ideas out there to try to increase the number, some way of communicating differently? Like I've started to see some more social media posts about it. But just wondering because it sounds like it's pretty far off from what we would really want to see being able to utilize that service, right? I mean.
Right, right. At our all hands little Zoom meeting yesterday or maybe the day before, I'm kind of really losing track of days. Pushing it out, I think having it translated into our top five languages. I think Adam Smith was working on that. Because several of those families are some of our most needy families. So I believe Adam is working on that part. And Jessica Papillo did push the email out to high school students because even though mom or dad that originally the emails went to, they might not be English isn't their first language, the students are. So we're trying to push it out through the students as well. I know a lot of my staff have continued to push it out through theirs as well, their own social media. But like I said, we're really trying to hit it in the line, tell your neighbors and they don't even really have to be with their own parent. They just have to be in the car. So one lady that I was talking to Monday or Tuesday, I let her know that she's like, oh, I could bring my neighbor's kids with you know, because they might be at work and
Right.
So we have discussed and there's, I network with other districts as well and there's other things other districts are doing. Just, I don't know, but we are exploring other options, but trying to continue to spread the word.
Yeah.
So hopefully getting it out in the different languages will be a help.
Right, yeah, thank you.
My pleasure.
Hopefully we won't have to do it very long.
Yeah. I'm tired, but it's good.
Any other questions for Katie? All right, well, thank you, Katie. You know, it's this has been one of those pieces where we're trying to serve the community as a whole, right? So 18 and under don't have to be a student, just anybody who pulls up, we're gonna feed them. And that's the same, same way really across the nation because of kind of a, every district in the country got a waiver with the food service to be able to do that level of feeding. So next, we want to go to Mike Gag and Facilities Department. You know, with nobody in the buildings, kind of makes it a little bit easier, but we also know it's been raining quite a bit and the grass is starting to grow. So they still have quite a bit going on. So Mike?
All right, I'll start with the custodial side. We've been having a custodial rotate at each of the schools. We've got one custodial on staff basically to receive packages and US mail. So all we've done, we placed the walkie talkie on the front porch. So if a delivery comes up, they can grab the walkie, try and contact the custodian to let them know there is a delivery at the main entrance. So that's been working out pretty good. They're also, while they're in the building, they're wiping down rooms, going room to room. As they finish a room, they're labeling it, letting, putting a date and sign it and letting them know that the room has been sanitized. Also, they are been helping out on the food distribution, especially the ones in Melville. They've been helping loading, unloading coolers, emptying trash and cleaning up as needed. So Katie's staff is ready to go the next day and I gotta give kudos out. They've been doing a great job where they're helping out to make Katie's job a little bit easier, but she's still been doing a lot of work and I gotta give kudos out to her. She's really put a lot of effort in this and she's done a great job. Also, they're also checking up the idea to keep putting the American flag up. So we, I believe Tuesday, we started putting the American flag up in the morning and then there's custodians are taking down before they leave for the day. So just still displaying the American flag. On the general maintenance side, I do got a couple of guys working on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, going through the buildings, checking on for plumbing issues, any they're also checking walk-in temp coolers on Katie's walk-in freezers and coolers and also double checking to secure the building, make sure nothing gets into this inside and outside. Also, I have a, Darrell, our boiler tech has been checking on the equipment as well and he's running on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we pretty much got a maintenance guy running Monday through Friday through the buildings. And like Dr. Gaines said, with the rain we've had and the warm tempers, temperatures we got now, grass is really gonna start popping. And I have had a contact with my grounds crew and I believe we're gonna, we got some rain coming in late Monday and into Tuesday. So looks like we'll probably start cutting Wednesday and I'm gonna set them up with, as teams of two, just follow the rules that they are going with the social distancing. And we'll go from there. So if you might have any questions for me, go ahead and fire away.
I have a quick question with regards to having the tracks open and the playgrounds open. Are we having any rules about their usage? I know I've been taking advantage of Oakville at 6:00 AM myself and I mean, that's a a good thing for the community to be able to use, yet is there some fear of playground equipment and whatnot in terms of social distancing and leaving hand marks on metal and thing, you know, not hand marks, but hand germs.
Right.
Just curious if we have any rules going on there.
Yeah, I just got to with Chad, I'll let Chad to talk a little bit about that.
We are having signs made up for the playgrounds. They'll be printed tomorrow and laminated and the hope is to distribute them on Monday.
Okay. And so are they?
So so the stay home order that was issued on Saturday, that was effective Monday and goes through the 22nd, includes that playgrounds are closed.
Okay.
Sam had a question that she typed into chat. She wanted to ask if we had cleaned any of the playground equipment.
We have not.
So are, so, but are we going to leave the tracks open for people to use? I mean, since they don't touch them or is that different?
Chad, you want to reply to that one or?
Yeah, sure. At this time, we don't have fencing around all of our tracks. So I mean, we have had some conversation about that. We do have some signs being printed up for campuses in general, but we haven't decided at this point to close off our tracks.
Right.
They're at the high school and they're fenced and the fences are closed or locked.
Another question from Sam, is there a plan to clean the playground equipment?
Our first step was just to get them you know, closed off with signs. Mike and I had discussed doing that. There are companies that have offered to do that. We have the ability to power wash them ourselves. We were kind of following the general cleaning plan for our buildings in terms of all of our facilities. And so, you know, tentatively, we've looked at April 17th as a day of having the custodians go in and do house cleaning in order to prepare for student return. And so our conversation has been to keep in alignment with what we're doing for our buildings themselves.
A comment also from Lisa who's having trouble with the audio. She types, it's her understanding that sunlight destroys COVID-19, so I would look into what is required for outdoor equipment.
I guess I also wanted to kind of go over some of the supplies for the cleaning supplies. We do got a good stock of supplies on hand in the warehouse at GB and also in the school. So we are well stocked at the schools and at the warehouse. So we do got some back orders that are back ordered and we're kind of waiting for a few of those coming, but nothing that's pressing that we need. We got plenty of disinfectant, we're good on hand soap, we are good on hand sanitizer, we got plenty in stock. And also toilet paper and paper towels, we got a four to six week supply at the warehouse and not counting what's at the school. So overall, I'd like to give John Tucker kudos for he kind of been working on this stock for, I mean, him and Chad goes back four or five weeks ago and we've got a real good head start on stocking up our warehouse. So we're in very good shape, but we just do still got some backwards coming in, but overall, we are in great shape on supply stocks, cleaning supplies.
Okay, I'm just checking to see if you can hear me. No. Oh, you can. All right.
Any other questions for Mike?
Nope, just thank you to you and your crew also from all of us.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike. We're gonna move on to Paul in technology and there's probably no group that had to pivot more quickly than the technology department because towards end of last week, so actually about a week ago, our plan was to put Chromebooks in the hands of kids on Tuesday. And with the stay home order, when that came out Saturday, it was a quick shift to turn those around and get the Chromebooks out on Sunday. So big kudos to Paul and his team. So
Hi, good to see you all tonight virtually. And like Chris said, our team answered the call and we turned around 4,500 devices to go home in about four days. So I really hustled, but the payoff is great. The first thing we did also to help support our district administrators and people still in the buildings for that last day was to set up our help desk, our phone line, our ordering department help desk that we have forwarded that to an employee's house so they can monitor that full time. We then set up a dedicated email account for parents, MSD Chromebook Help email account. And that was for parents to reach out for any connectivity problems or any other issues with their Chromebook. And they took advantage of that. Around 200 families have been served through this email address with numbers now starting to taper off now that we have most people connected. If a device is determined to be broken or is not operating for some reason, they will troubleshoot through this email address and then be sent a link that they can then log into and choose an appointment slot and then stop by and get a hot swap spare in their device replaced. So it's really efficient situation, a set of procedures that have been developed. I really have to give a shout out to Sean Owens on my staff who has this well-rounded procedure now set up for parents to stop by. It's just three days a week, Monday, Wednesday and Friday for three hours in the afternoon. So right now, we're serving about 25 appointment slots per week and that could obviously go up if the the breakage goes up, but we're hoping that the breakage will stay low with the devices at home now and not being transported. Our efforts have paid off in terms of usage and to just give you an idea, on a normal school day, even though we're one to one and have 10,000 devices, only about 35 to 3,700 students are logged on at the same time at any given time. Now, under the current circumstances, around 1,500, even 1,800 students were logged in at the same time today, I noticed. Approximately 3,500 students there logging in with clever, a single sign-on program. That's about the same number as a normal school day, which is quite impressive. Seesaw, the program used highly in the elementary setting, has gone from about 250 users a day to 1,600. Another highly utilized program and evidence of that usage. And lastly, another little data point, the assessment tool iReady is averaging about 2,000 users a day and that's just slightly down from 3,000 that we see in a normal school day. A big hurdle we had were users needing remote access, a VPN, a virtual private network. And under normal circumstances, we have about 20 to 30 district users that need it. Not many more than that because most everything is in the cloud now. Suddenly, once the shutdown occurred, we had about 75 people need that access ASAP, primarily to serve their building budgets and work with the business office to maintain that. It's a complicated process to set up virtual private networks. We could do maybe three to five per day. Another shout out to our employee Mark Prado, absolutely amazing, developed a single click deployment, wrote a special code program, sent it to the people and they can get up and running. Of which 25 people we got online today. So really rolling along with that connectivity, that remote connectivity for the key people who need it. We've been working with Marshall, providing him a little extra priority, the extra support for the business office so they can sustain a good continuity in their operations. And I can say our workflow, everyone is working and working hard. They're taking shifts and monitoring the help desk emails. They provide a quality rapid response to our stakeholders. This includes working shifts to also assist those parents as they stop by. And I want to also note that we are taking extreme precautions to maximize that social distancing when parents stop by using a rolling cart, rolling it out. The people honk their horn, we roll a cart out, you reach out, set the device in the cart. We take it and do a trade and then we roll those devices down the hall, let them sit for a week and then we'll dig into them. So we have a hardworking, dedicated team. They're willing to attempt innovative solutions in these challenging times and I could not be more proud of them. What questions do you have for me?
Great job for you and the whole team. I think it's just marvelous what you guys accomplished in such a short time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jean.
If you have time, better hear you say anything about capacity. Sounds like the network held up.
Network is holding up, holding up very well.
That was my question too.
Yep. We weren't sure. I'll tell you, we weren't totally sure with the VPN tunneling through, that adds an extra strain on the firewall. But no, handling it wonderfully. We're less than 20% capacity with all the extra users we're adding.
Great. All right.
Anything else for? Thank you, Paul. I'm gonna move on to Marshall next. You know, we set his group up pretty quickly to be ready to go. And so we're just trying to make sure we get people paid and we're paying the bills so that the electric stays on and we maintain good standing with all of our vendors.
So step one was to get remote access and we did that a couple of days before we went on spring break with a huge thank you to IT to get us there. And then since then, we're adding printer scanners to people, VPN access, we're gonna be adding a monitor as well. So basically, you're gonna have like 10 home offices for people to be, you know, more productive at in their homes. We've been very successful at keeping people at home and, you know, keeping them safe. So there's only been a few people pop in for a few minutes throughout this week. So that's, that's worked well. We actually ran our first AP check run today. We had AP staff print 58 checks at their home office for $183,000. So that was successful. We've had benefit staff submitting the ACA federal filing to the IRS. We're waiting approval on that. That happened this week. Just to give you a quick idea of other activity, our payroll person Angie, normally we have two people, but right now we have one person working with one on leave. So Angie's been able to stay up with the payroll and work remotely. She's on target to put out the, to process the April 3rd paycheck. We've actually conducted, because of the risk of what we face and, you know, with, you know, at any time, our entire department could be self quarantined if, you know, anybody comes down with a virus. Trying to pay staff, trying to pay vendors, keep benefits going. So cross-staff cross-training is a heightened sense, but we actually have been able to perform some effective staff cross-training using the Zoom phone conferencing. And so that's been, you know, a new thing that we've done as a result of the new norm. We've had a lot of staff meetings using the Zoom phone conferencing as well as every other department using that. Sort of looking at efficiencies going forward. When you face these kinds of things, oftentimes, you know, new procedures pop out that you hadn't really thought about before or you just hadn't pushed before. So you know, for instance, benefit orientations for new employees, we might end up using the Zoom phone conferencing just to do remote employee orientations going forward. When things do get back to normal, there's a lot of efficiencies and inconveniences for new employees to do it that way. One of our benefit staff is retiring at the end of this school year. We've been working with HR to go through the candidates to We've been working with HR to go through the candidates to, you know, start the interviewing process. So basically just normal stuff that we would do in the office, we've been able to do this week. We do have a mail pickup schedule of a couple of people or alternating people coming in just twice a week to do the mail pickup. But that's, you know, a quick in and out. Other than that, that's sort of a quick rundown of what we've done this week. And just again, a huge thank you to IT and a huge thank you to all my staff members. They've really rallied together. They're working as a team. And we're able to do a lot of things remotely this week. So it's been very encouraging. Any questions?
Do you see any issues coming as far as needing board approvals for spending?
I don't at this point. I mean, the main expenses that we're incurring are, you know, the laptops, the printer scanners, the monitors. That's, that's not sizable money. And I haven't heard any other departments coming forward with huge expense requests. So at this point, I don't think there's going to be any special expenses. We're not burning gas right now. So we're going to be decreasing the gasoline expense. And I think that'll more than offset these home office type expenditures. So at this point, I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Well, Marshall, just like every other department that had to suddenly change how they do things. You guys are doing a great job and keep up the good work and everybody stay healthy there, okay?
I'm really blessed with some great staff members and great supporting departments. And that's, that's the, that's the key.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions for Marshall?
He's not wearing the tie, so I can't tell what's going on.
You know, one of our other pieces, you know, we still need to hire people for next year. And we've got all kinds of things that have been flying through Congress and trying to get up to speed on those things. So I'll let Jennifer talk about our HR world.
Hi, everybody. So like everybody else who's talked, I have a really, I have a really great staff. I have Crystal Marard and Jennifer Pipkins, who have been working remotely, doing everything that we need to do on a bare bones skeleton staff. We usually have three and we've been down to two lately. So any good news coming from our department is a direct result of how hard those two have been working. So HR has tried to put a balance between giving employees grace and trying to support them while they're either working remotely or caring for their children at home. And then also considering how we can make sure that we're in a position when we either go back to school or start school next year, that we have retained good people and that we're able to recruit good people. So with respect to new hires, the strategy has been where and when we can hire somebody now contingent upon a return date in the future. We've been able to do that. If we have positions that require somebody to step in now, certainly we can train them remotely and do whatever, take whatever steps we need in order to prepare them to come in before we're technically back in school. But that's worked well for us so far. The other big issue that's come up in the HR world is that the federal government has taken measures to address families who have childcare and homeschooling and are in quarantine or lockdown situations. They've done that in two ways. One is by extending FMLA to situations where employees are simply caring for a child whose school or childcare provider is closed. That's the only, the only eligibility requirement, the other one being 30 days. So that can eventually affect schools. The second one would be that there's a two week paid leave for anyone exhibiting COVID-like symptoms or anyone who's been quarantined. We have been able to get around that because we are paying our employees during the closure. And we anticipate paying them through April 23rd. So while we have appraised ourselves with those two federal, federal acts and federal aid packages, we're largely able to avoid them because we are paying. The nuance comes when we deal with short term subs. And to the extent possible, we are, we have been working and talking with other school districts. And the conventional wisdom is to encourage them to apply for unemployment so that we're not in a situation where we've got to start doing calculations, looking back for 30 days, 60 days a year in order to figure out, you know, what two thirds of the salary is going forward. And then the other parts of our job are assisting Marshall with payroll and the payroll department handling time sheets as they come in from various groups or A's classified groups. And then going forward, we're trying to get a sense of normalcy about how we're going to recruit remotely and interview remotely and hire remotely. There are some hurdles, you know, for instance, nobody can go get fingerprints right now. So we've been, we've been taking measures to make our employment contingent on those steps. So that way we can still grab the most qualified candidates the fastest and get them under lock without, without jeopardizing putting somebody in place who would be a good fit via a background check process. So we're trying to do business as normal and largely we've been able to do that, which is nice. And it's nice to see everybody's face on Zoom tonight. So if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Jennifer, this is probably, this, I could have asked this anytime, but it just occurred to me now that recently we'd gone through that program, you know, for, you know, where the sexual abuse and sexual assault. And I meant to ask you last time, but when we hire relatively young teachers, is there any special care taken about how, you know, how their performance is among the students because of their youth? Do we have anything in place for that?
Yeah. So, you know, what we try to do is do in addition to the, to the rat back and the child abuse and neglect and the fingerprinting, which would give us an objective reason to exclude anyone from employment based on acts that we are aware of. We subjectively train our principals and the hiring, the folks with hiring capacity to make sure that they're doing things such as performance evaluations, that they're getting the references from, from pre-service or student teaching supervisors. But with respect to youth being a, you know, I don't want to call it obstacle, but youth being a factor in how, how a new employee would be received. All we can do is what we're doing objectively, doing those background checks. And then, you know, using our oversight as hiring managers to weed out anyone who doesn't exhibit the quality characteristics we would look for. And then going forward with, with strong observation by supervisors, mentors, team teachers or team, you know, team members. And that's, it's really about what we can do. And so far that's been successful for us. We haven't seen any kind of disproportionate issues with, with younger teachers in the way that they exhibit behaviors that are anything other than appropriate.
I'm glad to hear that there is some oversight or monitoring, particularly in the case of, you know, because when I started teaching middle school, I was like 22 or 23. And you think about, that was a different era then. You don't need to worry about as many things then as we do now. But it is a concern, you know, and I'm glad to hear that there is monitoring and special things in place, you know, so that they don't fall between the cracks. So thank you for that.
I understand, you know, and that's important to us. I mean, we are looking to recruit and retain quality employees. And so it's, the onus is on us to do whatever we can to properly, to properly supervise and mentor our new employees so that they can in turn mentor new and young employees as they become more experienced. So it's worked nicely for us. Thanks for that question.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, that's the same approach we take at the YMCA for hiring. It sounds like we're working from the same playbook.
Well, I'm pleased to know we're doing, doing as well as, as the YMCA in our endeavors.
I think you're doing a better job. You're, you're a little more focused.
I'll take it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jennifer? All right. Thanks, Jennifer. So, you know, all of, all of these departments that you've heard from really help support our core mission and that's teaching and learning. So Brian Smith and his team have had a big job over the last few weeks, putting together learning plans and what all that looks like. So Brian, it's all yours.
Thank you, Dr. Gaines. So thanks for being here this evening on certainly less than ideal circumstances. So I'd like to take just a minute or two tonight to kind of walk you through what our current plan is, allude a little bit to what our future plan is going to be, and then obviously take any questions that you may have. So with regards to our current plan, our plan started this past Monday and will continue through Friday, April the 3rd. That has been kind of a blend approach with both non-digital and digital types of activities at the K8 level. We've tried to have continuity with the platforms that kids have continued to be able to use. So as Mr. Westbrook mentioned previously, you know, we've had a lot of kids who have access technology and are using Seesaw, that's really a K5 platform, and Google Classroom, which is a 612 platform. Initially, we, we had some limitations with regards to the communication between teachers and students. That was more intentional just because we want to make sure that the platform that we're going to ultimately end up rolling out in the future plan was as approved and as compliant as what we could, what we could make it. There's obviously federal and state laws that we also have to make sure that we're following. And despite the fact that we're in a pandemic, it doesn't excuse us from following the law. And so we're trying to be very mindful about that. We've had plans that have been targeted for pre-K ages three through five, our elementary K through five, our middle school 68, and our high school 912. The focus really, all the way across, has been about a little bit of interaction with literacy, a little bit of interaction with mathematics, as well as obviously trying to ensure that kids are staying mentally and physically healthy and trying to encourage some PE opportunities. Our current plan has really revolved around both review and enrichment. So we have not gone with any new instruction over the course of this week or over the course of next week. Now, after next Friday, because of the stay at home order from St. Louis County, we recognized early on that we were obviously going to have to enhance our plan. So our curriculum team meets daily virtually from eight to nine. And then obviously we have some meetings throughout the day as well to talk about things and to try to develop things. By next Wednesday, we will have kind of that next iteration of what our learning plan is going to look like. One of the pieces that was decided today is that we will use Google Meet as the primary platform that will allow teachers as much two-way communication as really is what is allowable by law. So while our secondary folks will still continue to use Google Classroom as they've used it really throughout the year. And as much as our folks at the elementaries are going to be using Seesaw, as they many times have been using throughout the course of the year, we'll add an extra piece there just so we can try to at least gain some two-way communication. I think that will help teachers and I think it'll help our kids in our community just to be able to interact with their teachers a little bit more in that way. We're going to encourage it. It's not a requirement. But I have had a lot of people who have reached out and have questioned the, the communication piece. But we were always trying to keep students' data and privacy and teachers' data and privacy first and foremost at the front of the decisions that we were making. So I do want to make sure I take a moment to compliment Paul Westbrook and Alicia Landers and Mark Frato. They guided us through this. They're kind of the experts within the field in our district. And so we're taking their recommendations and I feel that we'll be in pretty good shape there. We have, we've also had packets available with both those blended opportunities of non-digital and digital from pre-K through eight. Those are available at each school, outside of each school. Pre-kindergarten opportunities are also available at all the satellite schools. So we have tried to make them both available online. They are available online underneath the COVID-19 tab. They're called remote learning resources. So they're available there. And that really, that, that's kind of in, in its entity, that's both a combination of our, our current plan, which will go through next Friday. And then we will start our kind of future plan the Monday after. And really we will be prepared to be able to take that as far as what we need to be able to take it, whether it's three weeks or whether it's longer. Our plan is to be able to take it as long as we need. In the plan that we will have developed by next Wednesday, we will be able to make some mention and provide some guidance related to both instruction and assessment as well as grading practices during this particular time. I know a lot of people are really chomping at the bit to want to be able to do some new stuff. But we are also very mindful of how these recent events and the future events can also cause a lot of anxiety, a lot of stress. There's obviously some financial distress that families will go through, some families will go through. And whether people have a direct or indirect connection to folks who may come down with this virus, there's a lot of trauma that can come out of this too. So I know we're trying to be very, very intentional in our decisions and very sincere with the communication we have. One of the last pieces I would say is between yesterday, today, tomorrow and Monday, our curriculum team will have had Zoom calls with every single building as well. We've been hosting 30-minute Zooms to allow them the opportunity to be able to ask us any questions that they have. And so those calls have been going well. We, the curriculum team has been on all those and just like the other departments, I can say that my, my team has just done a phenomenal job. And, you know, this, we wouldn't be where we are without really their hard work. We've worked day and night for a number of days in a row, including weekends for the last couple. So our next project is to get this new plan, this future plan, ready to go. And once we have it ready to go with some guidelines and suggestions, that will be what we will continue to do moving forward. So I would be open to any questions that you may have.
Brian, this is Jean. When you were discussing Google Meet, you said something about that something as much as was allowable by law, what were you referring to?
Sure. There's the Amy Hester Act of 2011. And that is from Missouri. And that's one of the, a law that really tries to limit the virtual communication between a teacher and a student. And so, you know, like I said, we're, we're mindful of that. You know, these are not normal times and we're not trying to catch people in unintended consequences. So that's why it has certainly taken just a little bit longer. That was an intentional decision when we said, you know what, we're just going to focus on one-way communication for right now. And while I know that was a little frustrating to some people, there was a, there was a good reason why we did that because we were trying to keep the data and the privacy of both students and teachers protected during this time. And we didn't want people just going out there and finding the first platform and not having consistency in this process.
I understand. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Um, I don't know how many, like, long-term subs are in place right now, but I know that there are some. So what does it look like for them to tie in and make sure that they're able to navigate this new type of learning that we're on? Is that something the principals are working with them on or are they paired with someone else?
So I believe if I'm not mistaken, and Jennifer Hansen could correct me, I think we have about somewhere between 10 and 12 folks that would actually physically require that long-term sub. We have a few other positions that would not necessarily require a sub, meaning that teacher-student interaction during this particular point in time. And so principals, if, you know, because those many times are things that are previously established, meaning that when we have some subs that have been in place prior to this. So the expectation is that that person would continue to pick up the job responsibilities of that, that, you know, teacher that they're covering during this time. It is a limited number of people. It is a limited number of people, but the expectation would just be very similar. It's probably easier at the secondary levels when you're using a platform like Google Classroom as opposed to at the elementary level. Not that Seesaw is any more difficult, but I think many times that, that teacher-to-student engagement is just a little bit more significant at the younger levels. They, they like to see their teacher, they like to engage with their teacher. So those are going to be some obstacles that we're going to run into probably in the next step. Because really the way that the current learning plan was designed was it was designed to, for kids to be able to do that work at home and using the support of clever, you know, logging onto clever. And although not completely independent, we're really putting parents in the role of teachers during this particular time. So these first two weeks was really intended to be kind of a bridge until we could get a better plan in place to say, or a more permanent plan, to plan for as long as what we really need to be able to go.
Got it. Thank you.
A question from Sam in the chat window. I know one question I've been asked several times is what happens for the kids that are graduating this year? And how will grades work after this first two weeks?
Sure. That's a question I've been getting some too. I think a lot of us have been getting that kind of question. So one of the things that we, our district, and I think pretty much all districts are committing to, is working with kids to be able to ensure that, that if at all possible, that they can earn their high school credits as they normally would. You know, and in terms of, you know, the goal is not to hold any kid back in this process. So what some districts are doing, I'm not saying that we're doing this yet at this point in time because we have to really figure out that grading philosophy and how we want to be able to do it. Some districts have chosen to go pass/fail. Other districts have to simply be able to make that decision to say, here are the remaining assignments that I'm going to have as part of the grade book. And these are the points that they're going to be allowable for that. And then that allows at least a clear communication of the things that have to get done. Because, you know, when you're trying to do this, not everything that in a class is necessarily taken for points. And when you're trying to do virtual learning, it becomes clear that not everything that you're necessarily working on online is necessarily going to be taken for a grade. So we'll have some guidelines and some recommendations for secondary staff. As that former high school principal, that one's near and dear to my heart. And there's nothing more that I want than to try to ensure that every single senior can at least make it through and have a reasonable expectation to say, as long as I do what I'm supposed to be able to do, I will be able to have that transcript that says I graduated. Now I know from a prom and graduation, you know, that's not necessarily in my department. So I, I don't have any comments on that one because we just don't know at this point in time. We just have to, we'll take it day by day and week by week. We want to be able to offer those opportunities for kids. We love celebrating with kids and enjoying those moments with them. But we also have to make sure we're doing what the federal and state and local health authorities are saying is the best practice too.
If we decide to go with the pass/fail system, will that be district-wide or by school?
Any decision, Isabel, that we would make would be district-wide. So we would be looking at 912 and technically you would probably be looking at 812 because you have some eighth graders that are taking elementary one or a foreign language for credit as well. If we were to do that kind of system, pass/fails, the one thing that you do have the benefit of that is that it would have zero impact on the GPA. Now that's a pro and a con because some people would be like, I needed an opportunity to get another, you know, seven hundredths of a point. But given these times, there are certainly more important, not diminishing, you know, this, there are some more important things to try to be able to take care of. You know, we've had the same issues with ACT testing. I've had some folks reach out to me and say, I'm, I'm so close. I just need to take it one more time. How can I do this? That is well beyond a teaching and learning control because we have to follow what ACT, and that's a nationwide. You know, they're based out of Iowa City, but we have to follow what they recommend. We'll do everything we can to try to have that junior testing if we make it back. Even if we have to do it in an online format, we're prepared to be able to do that. But, you know, some things are out of our control, so we just have to game plan and move forward once we know what the rules actually are.
Okay.
I want to add some pieces there. So we're working on guidance from DESI on some graduation pieces and issuing of credit, which is, you know, kind of an eight through 12 piece because of the high school classes. So we do know some things kind of already. In terms of A+, they have essentially frozen GPAs where they were in December. So your December GPA is what counts towards A+. And then they've also reduced the number of tutoring hours that will be required there. So, and those things are actually not DESI things. Those are Department of Higher Ed and Workforce Development. They came out with that guidance relatively quickly. But the two high schools have been working to identify that one, we have a number of students that if you look at their transcript, their credits, they have enough credits. They met the graduation requirements already. So we've got a whole slew of kids, graduation not an issue. The credit that most kids are short or need in this semester is a language arts credit. So we're working to identify those kids, making sure we get them through with that credit. And then after that, you know, it's really at the individual student level. So our high school administrators and counselors are working to identify exactly what kids need what and how we can best get them across the finish line under unusual circumstances. Because we need, we have kids that they need to every credit this semester. Plus they're taking additional coursework to make up as well. And then we have students who, because of all the testing stoppages, will have trouble around Missouri options as well. So it, it's going to be a year of anomaly. We're trying to work through it the best we can to get students across that finish line for graduation. But we are waiting for a little bit more guidance from the state on some pieces as well. Any other questions for Brian?
Hey, before we end here, I just want to formally thank all of you and all the people that are not on this call, all the people in central office, all the teachers, principals. We've been hearing so many good things just across the entire district, all of us as board members have. And you know how things normally kind of are, we don't normally get a ton of positive stuff. And this has got to be one of the toughest times out there. And you're all showing everybody what we already knew, that there's this great team in central office. The way you're all coming together, the way you're all making this happen, it's great. It's really awesome what you're making happen here. And I just want to thank all of you for it. You know, you're making the best of a pretty bad situation. So thank you. And keep it up, I guess, till the end of the year, right? Thanks.
Yeah, and I received a very nice text today from a very longtime teacher and she's become a friend of mine because of my kids. And I wanted to share it with everybody. I already shared it with all the board members separately, but she just said she wanted to say how appreciative she is of her, of our administrative, central office, curriculum team and our board. I know everyone has been working unbelievably hard during this difficult time. The compassion, caring and empathy I'm seeing makes my heart want to burst. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I just thought that was a nice thing to share, given she's on the frontline where the rubber meets the road. And so I wanted all the administrators to hear that the teachers are feeling, are feeling the love from you guys. So good job.
Our goal is to provide as much support as we can and to make sure all of our employees feel secure so that when we do go back to school, everybody's ready to go. And hopefully they can stay healthy and, and safe through this extended absence. But I think we're all, we'd like to have everybody back as, as soon as we can. But we know that we're going to take the advice of health professionals and do what we need to to keep all of our 10,000 kids safe and our 1,500 employees safe, which then impacts, you know, 100,000 or so folks throughout our community. So thank you all very much. You know, I'll continue to send some updates, but we probably won't do one of these again. Kind of impromptu, but felt like we wanted to give you an update. But we've got a meeting on the 12th, which as of right now, that will probably be virtual in some manner, but we'll have to pay some bills and do some other pieces then. So thank you all very much.
Do we have to formally adjourn? Yes. I move we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have to do a roll call on this one or? Probably just all in favor, right?
That's only when we go into close, probably that we have to do a roll call.
Got it. Yeah, we would. That's correct. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.